Okay, so this is the candidates forum for the position of Board of Selectmen. And we have three candidates with us tonight, Charlie Sullivan, Jim St. Laurent, and Trevor Matthews. Hello, guys.
Hello.
I am Lucille Rosa, I'm the president of the Free Town Lions Club, and generally, I'm the one who runs the candidates forum. So due to the restrictions we have placed on us this year, we're doing a Zoom session which is being recorded by Tim McIntosh, and he will post the recording on the town webpage so that people can see it and find out about those of you that they don't know. Okay, so I'm going to ask a series of questions, and I'm gonna vary who answers first, so that the same person doesn't have the pressure on them all the time. So the first question is, I would like you to tell us about yourself, and let's start with Trevor.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Trevor Matthews. So I'm a third-generation free-towner. You know, I grew up in town playing baseball at KRR, mountain biking to Free Town State Forest, you know, kayaking along Pond. You know, it was really an amazing place to grow up. So after high school, I moved to Boston for college and to start my career. I received a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Suffolk University, and then went on to get my Masters from Suffolk as well as a graduate fellow in accounting. So after college, I was recruited to work in the public accounting firm, KPMG. I did that for a few years. The 60-hour work weeks were killing me. So I decided to change career paths, and I ended up going to work with a company called Global Partners up in Wellham. And that they're a commodity trading company. So after there, I was there for a few years, and then I went and moved, and now I currently work at Gulf Oil in Wellesley. So I run a team with the goal of improving processes and systems, mostly as it relates to accounting and finance. So, you know, after living in a couple of different communities and around Boston, it was time for my fiancee and I to pick a place to settle down and start a family. So we decided, you know, let's move back home to Asona, buy a house, and you know, and that's where I am right now. So, and you know, what I realized, the reason why I'm running, or is that too early?
It's fine.
So yeah, so the reason why I'm running is, when I moved home, you know, I was gone for about 10 years, and you know, things didn't feel the same as they did when I left. You know, it's like some of the recreational areas were kind of a little ran down and seemed to be underutilized, not like I remember when I was a kid. A lot of the restaurants I used to go to, you know, they're no longer there, the Inn, Asona Village Pizza, and Kathy's, and other locations like that. And also, like, Long Pond, which is a beautiful resource, it seems to be kind of overrun by these invasive species, and when I was there last summer, it did not look the same at all. So, you know, these kinds of things kind of led me to want to get involved, and I started looking where I could get involved, and I saw that there was a, you know, I could run for selectman, and so this is why I'm doing it.
Okay. Charlie, can you tell us about yourself?
I am a lifelong resident of Free Town, like Trevor is. Went through the school system here in Free Town. I, after graduating from college, primary school, I went on to college. I received a Bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Stonehill College, and did graduate work in a massive work at Northeast for public administrations. I, since, once I graduated from college, I was able to fortunately get a job as a police officer in Free Town, which was my goal. I spent more than 33 years with the police department, retiring nine years ago, the Lieutenant Second Committee Department. Why I'm running for reelection, why originally ran for election, was I wanted to make sure that, what I thought was, try to do the best, be in the best interest of the town, the Free Town residents. And I have tried through the three years I've been on to do that. I would like to continue that. I know we are in times at this time, and I think my experience would help out there. Before I was a selectman, I was on, and I am still on, the Building Committee, or Town Buildings in Town, the Police Station Subcommittee, and I've been seven years on Conservation Commission. These are all unpaid positions that are totally volunteer. That was part of what I wanted to do. I always lived in this town. I worked my career for this town, and I believe that I want to be the best, to do the best for the town of Free Town.
Thank you. Jim?
So, I'm the anomaly here, so I'm not from Free Town originally. I'm from Somerset. I grew up in Somerset. I went into the Navy. I'm a Navy veteran who wants to give back to my community. Thank you. With honor, courage, and commitment. That's our Navy core values. So after the Navy, I put myself through school. I got an IT degree. I became very quickly an IT manager, lead engineer, and from there, I went to selling software to the federal government. And through that, I progressed to be an account executive. Account executive is essentially a sales manager. From there, I've taken executive positions, being the VP of Software Services Company, and now I own my own business. I also, well, a small business, and I also am the Executive Director for the Veterans Association of Bristol County. So with all those jobs in my career, I've learned, well, I have a track record of creating partnerships and relationships which create results and value. The, it's also provided me a great ability to listen to problems, analyze problems, and provide results and provide solutions to problems throughout my whole career. That's what I've done. Why did I run for selectman? Well, just like Trevor said, you know, I've been here for 11 years, and even within those 11 years, seeing these small businesses leaving, and not having much encouragement for them to come back, I figured maybe I can make a change with that. I'm all about small business, and I think that I could be a very good candidate to bring back small business and make good decisions within this community. I have no political or special agendas within town. I'm not a, I'm not a long-term resident. I've been here for 11 years, but I do have commitment to the residents in town. I would do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. The next question, and some of you have already touched upon this in your telling us about yourself. Give us what your qualifications are for you to be able to do a good job as a selectman. Let's start with you, Charlie, this time.
Well, I believe the qualifications that are most important is that throughout my adult life, as long as I've been a registered voter, I have been at least active in town government as basically attending such things as town meetings and voting in town elections. And I have always been at least an active participant of the town meeting. I cannot say I have made every town meeting. I think I would be fair to say that I made majority of town meetings, also voted in town elections. That being said, having been an employee of the town through the years, seeing the town change, when I became a police officer, we had a population of about a little bit over 5,000. Now we have a population of over 9,000. So I've seen the town grow quite a bit, and I've seen what has been done and where the town has been lacking. And my view of things is that, I feel I have years over the years, and one of the things I sorrowfully say is I don't see in the past that we've had a lot of progressive ideas. It's more like, well, we've never done that before, so why are we going to change? And though, I realize that I'm only one member, and I can only present my viewpoints, and when you're working with a board, it's not always as easy as you may think it will be to do things. So you have to kind of work, you have to play, you know, play along sometimes to get things done. I see that, and I think that that's an important thing that we have to remember, is that we're only one member of the board, and it's up to the board itself. Sometimes you're gonna have something go right for you, and sometimes you're gonna have things go wrong. So that's, so I think I have experienced through my employment, and also the fact, like I said, I've been on three, and I am on three other committees that are volunteer, that are trying to get the town moving in the right direction, watching over as it grows. Conservation Commission, one of the jobs is to watch over things as they grow, and make sure that the conservation laws adhere to. The Building Committee, I think, is important because we have a dire need for new facilities in town. And as I said, the Police Station Subcommittee is evident as where we've gone with Building.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, Jim, how about you go next?
All right, so I think, again, I give a different perspective. I think my leadership skills, including my supervisory management and executive and ownership, business ownership, brings a different perspective when making decisions, analyzing decisions, and understanding how to progressively move forward. I think, being somebody especially living in the Navy, living all over the United States, whether it's San Diego to Tennessee to Jacksonville to Norfolk, Virginia Beach, here, Somerset, I have a different perspective of, you know, how those towns were run, what works, what doesn't work. What I've seen, I forgot, Lenin Town, Maryland as well, but what I've seen that I think are really good things that are happening in town, and what I think are negative things that happen in those towns. So I think by experiencing, having that experience, living and being in those places, I can bring a different perspective to this town. You look at my signs, it's, you know, it's all about planning for the future and preserving the past. When, you know, when I look at Free Town, I like to look at the past of Free Town and how it's developed, and it seems like it's been stagnant for so long, and I think that I can, I can change that and bring new ideas within this town.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Trevor, your turn.
So all of my experience really is in corporate America. I don't have any experience thus far working in, you know, local or any kind of government. But I think that the experience I do have will translate well. So I, as an auditor, when I worked at KPMG, I got to see the inner workings of some of the, you know, the most successful businesses in the world. And I've seen what kind of processes and systems and management styles work, what doesn't work. And I plan on, you know, using those, that experience I have when I, when I take this position, hopefully. Also, my day-to-day right now, what my job really is, is, you know, I meet with stakeholders, I gather requirements, I look at different potential solutions, and then I implement those solutions. And our goal is to either find efficiencies, you know, either financially or just the time it takes for people to do their job, and really make the stakeholders' lives better. And I plan on using that same kind of methodology in the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question is probably not as simple as it sounds. Why do you want this position? Let's start with you, Jim.
Oh, like I said, I decided, and people ask me all the time, why did you decide to run? You know, it's a, well, Charlie would know, it's, sometimes it's a thankless job. A lot of people, there's a lot of complaints and whatnot. I just, I want to be the voice of the residents. I want to listen and understand what their issues are, what their problems are. I want to be there for them. I want to understand how they want this town to progress, and I want to, I want to be their advocate. So that's, I mean, it's not a simple question, but it's, that's a simple answer to it. I just really, I decided that I want to be a, somebody that can give back to my community and somebody that could use all of my experience to make good decisions going forward within this community.
Okay, thank you. Trevor?
Yeah, so a couple of reasons. First of all, why I'm running, you know, why I think I, why I want this position is, you know, I see a lot of people online getting upset about things, and you know, they're keyboard warriors, and they're always complaining, but they don't really get involved and do anything. You know, and I saw some things that I was, you know, didn't like, I was concerned about. And rather than just getting mad online, I wanted to get involved and try to, you know, make a difference. You know, put my money where my mouth, my money where my mouth is, you know, really try to actually make a difference. Also, you know, like I said in my introductory thing, speech, there's, this is, when I grew up, this is an amazing place to grow up, and I hope that my generation's children have the same experience when, you know, growing up here. And so that's really, that's what's really driving me, is I want to be proud to live in this town, and I want my kids to have, you know, the same experience I did.
Thank you. Charlie?
So the question, if I may remember correctly, is why am I running, correct?
Why do you want the position here?
I, and once again, I think that I want to try to push forward as best I can is aggressive ideas, maybe some modern ideas that haven't been accepted, I guess, or advocated for in the past. And we need, as a town, always to be willing to do some changes. And sometimes those changes might be a little contradictory. You know, both Jim and Trevor have talked about the fact that we've lost quite a few businesses, and especially in the Asona area in the last few years. And unfortunately, one of the main problems with that, or the main problems that caused that, in my opinion, is there is a problem with how do you deal with sewage. And the, the board, oh, the last year, they had a study through state funding. They got state funding to do a study of sewage issue in the South Main Street area. The unfortunate part is that is a very large undertaking monetarily, millions of dollars. And that, I think people have to realize that it involves lots of times money and the ability to pay for a project through taxes. So the sewage issue would probably help develop South Main Street more, but the question has to be, are the employees willing to take it? And they have to realize that, as you well know, Lucille, town buildings are not in very good condition at all. The libraries especially, I think, are very wanting. The fact of the matter is, there's no plumbing in the halfway library in Asona. So we have difficult issues to deal with, and they usually involve money. And ideas are good, but it comes down to the ability to pay for it. So my thing is, I want to see what we can do. You know, two years ago, we would never have thought we would have a sewage study. Three years ago, people were saying we'd never have a new police station. We're five, probably are five months away. So I feel that what I've been able to do is to help move the town forward, and I want to continue to do that. There's a lot of ways we can reorganize town government to possibly make it better, and I want to try to fight for that. But like I say, I'm one vote, and I'll do what I can, and I'll try to listen to the people. I'll put the votes before the people and let them make the decisions, but that's my views. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question number four. What problems do you see in our town that needs to be changed? That needs some kind of change to resolve the problem. Charlie?
Well, I think the biggest long-term problem in Free Town is getting our infrastructure more in order, especially as I mentioned just before, town buildings. The libraries are in need of renovation or building, probably a new project. Council on Aging Building is lacking. The, even the central fire station would need, needs to have some issues addressed. So I think our biggest problem is financing new buildings. We haven't done anything other than, as we say, the building a new police station in probably a century. So I think that's the most important thing. So I leave it for one issue. I would say that's the most important thing in my mind.
Okay, thank you. Trevor?
Sorry, I was muted there.
That's okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I actually, I agree. I think the most important, you know, the biggest problem we have right now is that sewer, is the lack of, you know, sewer down in Asona is a big problem. That's something that, you know, I hear a lot about. That seems to be the root, real root problem of a lot of other kind of symptoms. Additionally, I think that, you know, we could use more outdoor spaces that, so, you know, parks, dog parks, maybe. I have a little dog, so that would be really great for me. And also, I mean, I see a lot of people complaining about the waste services and the lack thereof, and, you know, a lot of times, there's issues with the staffing, I guess, I hear at the, at the dump and things of that nature. Those are common things I hear about people complaining about. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Oh, where do I start? No, so actually, both of what they brought up, I totally agree with. I think, you know, Charlie brought the town buildings, the senior center in particular, I think is important to, to help them create a new facility as well as, honestly, I live right in a corner, Water Street in Maine, and the fire department, you know, I see them daily, more than daily, come by my house. I mean, they, both the fire and police department are very busy. So it's good that we're doing stuff for the police department. I think the fire department needs some support as well. The sewer is coming into town. I understand that we did the feasibility study. I understand that it's costing, it's going to cost a lot of money to bring it all the way through town. Maybe there's something that we can look at, or something I will look at, is to do it incrementally, so the cost is not just right in your face, you know, bring it down to maybe where the businesses need to be established, and then in the future, bring it down to my house, you know, but that's, you know, to the town hall. So, you know, different things, we can think about it differently, to do things in stages. One of the things that we haven't discussed that it's not, you know, it's important to me, is there's a lot of structural buildings that are in town that makes the town look like it's failing, like the, on Main Street, the red building, the Weaver property that they took to build into maybe Nantucket or whatever. It looks garbage. It looks like this town's failing. And, you know, maybe some of those changes to bring and make this town beautiful again, especially on the Asona side. I look at the East Free Town side, and they've done a good job in keeping that area beautiful. I enjoy going over there, going over to the VFW, going to the restaurants, nephews and whatnot. So I just think that we could do a lot more in Asona. I think other things that we need to really look at in town is the...
Uh-oh. I lost the video.
Muted.
Am I the only one?
I must have touched something, so I'm muted.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. My video's still there. I'm just talking, you know.
Okay, you're back.
You know, I think we have an environmental issue within the, within the pond that we, we need to, as a town and as a community, address. I don't think that we should create a lake district. I've never been with that. But I think that there's different things with creating partnerships with other communities to address the issue. I think that's very important going forward. I've contacted DCR. They do have programs to help. And I think that creating a relationship with them to try to help us with containment of the weed issue, the invasive issue, I think that will be very important to that community, although in East Free Town, as well as the lake, which is one of our natural, beautiful natural resources in Free Town. And I think it needs to be addressed, and it's not going to be addressed if you keep on pushing it down the road. It needs to be addressed now, and I think our selectmen within Free Town needs to figure out how to address it with Lakeville and other surrounding communities, as well as the state. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. This question comes from a town resident. He wants to know, what is your view on the residential and commercial tax shift? I myself have not kept up on these kinds of details. Apparently, he believes that property owners are now paying higher taxes and commercial properties are paying less. So what's your view on that? Trevor, let's start with you.
Yeah, I'm muted, Trevor.
The same thing you did, Jim. I think that, you know, if we have to, lowering the corporate, you know, the commercial taxes, you know, that's obviously gonna be more attractive to companies to come in, which is, you know, generally will help the company, the town as a whole. I get that, you know, I understand. I don't know anything specific on this, besides, you know, just the obvious reason why one would do that. And I don't know where we are in line with our, with other communities. I know for the real estate taxes, generally, we're, you know, pretty on par below most of the surrounding communities. So, I mean, I wanted to complain about taxes being high, but then I looked at what everyone else is paying, and there's really not much to complain about. So that's really all I got on that topic.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
You know, I have to agree with Trevor on this, and maybe Charlie can give us a little bit more insight on the corporate tax that is actually coming in. And I think I was surprised with my tax rate. My tax rate didn't really go up last year, but my taxes went up significantly. And of course, it raised my eyebrows. One of the other reasons why I'm running for selectman, because I don't want any more higher taxes. With that said, I realized for my taxes that the assessment of my house went up significantly to the fact that I kind of questioned how much that assessment went up, why it went up that much. And if my house value is actually, actually that much, I kind of disagree with it. And if my house value is actually, actually that much, I kind of disagree with it. So I think, you know, we've given tax incentives to corporate entities like Stop and Shop, like Amazon, and like, you know, other entities like that. And I think that's a good thing. People don't realize that without getting, getting them in here, that property didn't make us any money anyway. So now it's making us a lot of money. And again, I haven't seen the financials of what that specifically is. I just know from talking to other people in town that it's a significant amount of income. So with that said, I'm also a firm believer in to bring small businesses into town and to retain other small businesses. I, I want to say that, you know, I would still encourage reduced tax rates within for small businesses to come into town, as well as, you know, if you're making a million dollars of revenue or below in town, you know, to keep them in town to possibly reduce, you know, by like a percentage or whatnot. We don't need to lose any more businesses, as you all well know. And we need to encourage small businesses to come in. So it's a, it's a very difficult taxes, it's a very difficult thing to really talk about. Because me, it's just like everybody on this, you know, here and everybody in this town, we don't want to pay more taxes. But, you know, how, how do we go about, you know, providing more revenue for more businesses coming into town by reducing their taxes, which will create more tax revenue? How do we go about that? That's kind of my position. Or that is my position.
Thank you. Charlie?
All right. To be perfectly honest to the Board of Selectmen, to the people of the town of Free Town, most of this question is more to the realm of the Board of Assessors. How tax rates are, how property is assessed, that's an issue. I believe the question was, the man, whoever asked this question is concerned about the ratio of the rate of residential to industrial and commercial. And in Free Town, they have what they refer to as a split tax rate. And the, the selectmen do have the authority and responsibility of voting with the Board of Assessors on the ratio of business tax to residential tax. Town of Free Town has generally had a higher rate for our commercial and industrial than residential. It is, as far as I'm, I know, consistent with most of the communities. Some communities don't have it, but most communities do. And so the man's question, I believe, was how do I feel? But I feel that my own opinion is we're at a good spot right now, the ratio between residential and industrial, commercial on the tax rate. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but I hear my two fellow panelists, shall we say, speaking of things where, you know, yes, we want to, we want to help out and develop, but there's a cost. And so the cost, you know, you can't go to the well and drain it. You gotta let it fill up also. So I, my, to answer the question that I think was posed, is I think we're at a good spot now. We'll see, as the future goes, what may, what may change in some ways. But we're in a good spot.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Next. Oh, my, my computer monitor just went dark on me. Okay. I must have hit the mouse or something. Question number six. Do you see room or think that there is a way to lower property taxes? Or do you think that that is not necessary? Let's start with Trevor.
So I think a big part of why property taxes are, you know, the amount of money people are actually paying, now that the rates are going up, but the taxes themselves are going up, is because of the South Coast Rail Project, right? Home values are increasing rapidly. I know my house in Assona has appreciated greatly in just over the last two years. So I think that there should be a conversation now that we should have going forward, where if the amount of money is increasing generally because of the increase in home values, well, then maybe we can talk about, you know, slowing down the rate or lowering the rate or any kind of increase. I just think that needs to be looked at. I don't have the answers, obviously, here. But that's what my, you know, my gut kind of reaction to that is.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Well, as we, we all know, no one wants to pay, pay taxes. They always want to have the taxes go down. I, I understand where people, and it is, can be a little bit of a shock sometimes when you realize that the value of your home has gone up and, you know, it's the proportion of, it's spread out more and more over different values and different properties. The, the end of, but the issue is this, is that everyone has the ability to go to town meeting and to voice their opinions about how money is spent. And that's, I think, the bottom line. You have your input, you have your ability to study what's going on. I, I, I don't think that Free Town's, I, I know Free Town's taxes are not oh, outside of the ordinary. Yes, it is communities close to us, Westport's one, where they have a much lower tax rate than Free Town does. But Free Town's tax rate, I want, it's probably in the area of thirteen thousand, a thousand, give or take some. If you go just a few towns north, kind of West Bridgewater, I believe the tax rate is in the area of seventeen to eighteen dollars an hour, dollars a thousand. So my feeling is that if you're worried about the taxes, realize that you're getting a reasonable deal. I'm not saying you're getting a good deal, but you're getting a reasonable deal. I think we are, oh, very conservative in, in some ways, in some areas of spending money. And the, the thing is though, you know, you want a service, you're going to have to pay for it. You know, if you're gonna go out and buy a, a new car, we'll say, you know, and you want that model, you're gonna pay a price for that model. You know, and if you want to spend an amount of money, you're gonna go with a model that might go with the money. So when we all like to have less taxes, yes, but how do we do that? As, as a community?
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Jim?
Oh, I kind of agree with, with both of them. I, I think that our tax rate is not a crazy high. I do think that there's things that we can do to relieve some burden, whether it's seniors that have a burden on them that are retired, that could get a tax decrease. I, like I said, with, with small businesses, and I do have a problem with the assessment. I do have the problem with the assessment on, on the, the property values of residents. I think that in a lot of ways, they're too high. And I think that that needs to be addressed. And, you know, I do think that we don't have a problem with revenue stream. I mean, within the, the industrial business that we bring in, as well as our residential income that we bring into this town. But I think that, you know, depending on, you know, income as well as age and whatnot, we should be able to do something for people within this town to, to help them with their tax rate. I mean, for years, I've heard things with other towns of, you know, senior citizens being pushed out of their homes because they just can't afford their taxes. They have to make a decision between taxes and medication, and that's wrong. They should have a flat tax going forward after a certain age. That's just my opinion. And maybe these are some of the people that have some of those questions. I think, you know, we all do need to pay our fair share. And if we do want some of these improvements in town, I think that, you know, our, our tax rate is viable.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
You'll, Lucille, if I may, just give information. Just so everyone's aware of some of the issues that, as Jim brought up about elderly people, there is mechanisms under the law to allow for seniors to pay less taxes than normally would be. That's one thing I wanted to, I also want to make everyone aware that Amazon does not pay, it has not, as of yet, paid any property tax. Unfortunately, that's, yes, and unfortunately, because of the, the way extreme life businesses are, they were able to get a TIF because they promised to provide jobs. I, I don't know if I have any worries, my opinion, of Amazon paying some taxes. So just so we're aware that Amazon, as of, as of now, has not paid any real estate property taxes at Town of Free Town.
Can we make Innovation Way a toll road?
The, and just, just so we, we know, and as to assessments, again, that's the Board of Assessors and not the Board of Selectmen. But just so everyone knows is that your property is assessed at what is considered fair full market value. And the, the assessments are overseen by the State Department of Revenue. So that everyone in Massachusetts basically is going to pay the same amount of taxes on, on their assessments, just so we know that. So it's really kind of a little bit out of the realm of the selection. Thank you.
I understand that, Charlie, that we're out of the realm of the selectmen, but you made a comment earlier about your involvement within the assessors to, as well. And then again, with one of my questions about, I have a question about the TIF that Amazon has, was there any clause in there that if you don't provide so many jobs, then you're gonna pay taxes?
That is a clause in it. And the issue is, you know, again, it's not really something that Free Town alone could pursue. They have to pursue it through the State Department of Revenue. And I, I can't tell you exactly what the figure was, but there, there is a figure.
All right, let's work on that.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know that is, that they aren't, they aren't within the agreement. I don't think anyone could really say for sure until you read the agreement again.
Of course.
Okay, I noticed that the police station is coming across along nicely, the new one. And I'd like to find out what building you think should go up next. Charlie?
My own personal belief is that the best thing probably to do would be to attack the, the library issue along, my own personal, along with the Council on Aging Building. Both are, both facilities are very decrepit. I personally would like to see maybe a joint library COA building that could use a lot of the mechanical issue, mechanisms within a building to join them as, as one building. Also, I think that the library and this COA kind of go together. People who are older are more likely going to use the library than people who are in the middle of their working careers, have jobs, that type of thing. And I, the, the COA needs, the Council on Aging Building needs to be definitely upgraded. And I, I feel that probably the best thing would be to build a new building and do it right. We, we, I think we've done it right with the police station. We've built a police station that will last, or should last for generations in the same way it should be with the Council on Aging and Libraries.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Jim?
Yeah, I believe the Council on Aging is a priority. I've visited it a few times prior to
Sorry.
While I was running for selectman, just to get to know what they do and get to know, get to know the building and whatnot.
Did you say you visited the libraries?
I, no, the Council on Aging, the senior
Okay.
I have visited the library and I, I can agree that we can put a small, or we should put a small component of a library and add, you know, computers and whatnot. You know, unfortunately, you know, some books are fine. I think that the libraries are, without computers are, in the past, you know, the, you know. And I also think that, so the priority would be the senior center. A lower priority would be the library. And then we need to address what we're gonna do with the town hall. I would, do not want to, the town hall to be abandoned and go somewhere else. But the, the space in the town hall itself needs to be addressed to, to provide enough space in there for the, the town officials.
Okay. Trevor?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I think the Council on Aging should be next on the list. You know, that seems to be a very, that location is used a lot by the town and provides a very important kind of place for people to meet. So, and also, it's clearly needs to be, you know, either, I think a new building is what needs to happen there. And I think it's kind of beyond being fixed. So yeah, and, and I know that the people there do a lot of good for the town and I think they deserve it.
Okay. How many of you have been in the Hathaway Library across from the town hall?
I have.
So have I.
I probably, I think I used to get tutored there when I was a kid. So not, not for years, but.
They do have a computer or two, but they do not have a bathroom.
Yeah.
There's no bathroom in that building. So they have to be limited as to the number of hours that they're open and try to coincide with when town hall is open. In case somebody has to go to the bathroom, they can go to the town hall. So it's, when I've been at state level meetings about the libraries in our town and, and our needs, I cannot tell you how shocked and mortified people are that we are in this kind of situation in Free Town. Well, okay, let's see. I have two more questions that I think we'll be able to zoom through. The next question is, how can we fund improvements that need to be made in the town? Jim?
Well, you know, again, I think that we need to encourage businesses to come in so we can offset the residential tax burden with business tax burden. And when I say business, I look at small business, what kind of revenue that they can bring into town. With that said, we do have, and I, you know, I think Charlie brought it up earlier, we do have money in our coffers to spend to help fund improvements. But we don't need to, you know, use all those and then have an empty bank account as well. So I think systematically, we need to understand what's the most important within town, what's going to help us establish more revenue in town by doing these improvements? How are we going to fund and, and do it modestly for like a senior center? And but without reducing our whole bank account? We do generate a good amount of revenue in town. but without reducing our whole bank account. We do generate a good amount of revenue in town, what I understand, with talking to the selectmen. So maybe Charlie can elaborate on what kind of money that we do have in town.
Okay, thank you very much, Charlie.
Well.
Hate to put you out of spot, buddy, but.
Well, yeah. The, just so people are aware, is what we refer to as stabilization funds. And stabilization funds are basically a town's bank account. And in Free Town, we've been lucky the last five, eight years to be able to put aside into the stabilization fund, both ordinary stabilization and capital stabilization fund, some of the money. And right now, I believe that in stabilization, capital stabilization, you're going to have probably around two, two and a half million dollars. That is money that can be added to reduce the need to borrow. But the facts of the matter are, is that you, if you're gonna build buildings, you need to borrow money. Luckily, we are close to the end of the school, the elementary school loans, and also we're close on the regional, well, I say regional, the Howland Road campus buildings there. Roughly running to the end of their current of bonds. So the bottom line is, if you are going to build a building, yes, maybe there are grants that you can pursue, but most of it's going to be under bonding. Right now, and as we see the foreseeable future here, whatever we, is foreseeable future, I guess, beyond tomorrow, is that rates for borrowing will be lower than normal. And probably, there will be some, maybe incentives to do some building, but that's all speculation. So really, the bottom line is, we're going to have to realize that when we build a new building, we're going to have to do considerable bonding. Like I said, we're very low amount of borrow, or borrowing at the time, at this time. So, you know, if the voters want to do it, well, you know, I, I don't see the town should, shouldn't present the plans, but then it's up to the voters to decide what they're going to do.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Trevor?
Yeah, so I think there's obviously there's a multi-pronged approach. You know, we're gonna have to obviously take on debt for these big ticket items, but I think we should actively pursue as many grants, you know, as we can, maybe even have someone full-time that their job is to do that. It's to look for these grants, you know, it's something I think that might actually pay dividends. Also, I think for some of the smaller kind of things we could do in town, just to make the quality of life better, I think we should look into public and private partnerships. If we can, you know, comes to mind for me is like K R R baseball fields, you know, and I growing up playing there. You know, and things of that, we could kind of approach local businesses, especially some of our industrial businesses in town and see if they're willing to work with us to, you know, to sponsor different, different types of, of recreational areas and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Now we have our last question, if you will. And that is simply, could you give us your closing thoughts? And Trevor, would you like to start that one?
Yep. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for, Lucille, thank you very much for putting this on. And Tim, from whatever, what I've noticed since I started paying attention around here is that I don't think the town would operate without your technical support. So just thank you very much. So, I mean, I just want to reiterate, reiterate that I, you know, I have a vested interest in the long-term success of this town. I, I, you know, decided to move back here. I plan on starring my family here and, and hopefully, you know, being here for a long time. So if you vote for me, you know that I have your interests because they align with my interests in town. So thank you everyone for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Trevor. Charlie?
Once again, I'll thank everyone for their time. And I, I want to thank the voters for allowing me to be a member of the Board of Selectmen for the last three years. It's always a challenge. And like I said earlier, it's one person voice within a void. I, I say, I've lived here, and I'll say, I've lived here all my sixty-four years. And as I've said earlier, been a town employee. I've had a vested interest in this town. And I, I always have, I believe that I've tried to look at the best interest of people, how their fiduciary interests in mind, and remember that anything that I do, I, I want to do for everyone. And it's up, then it's up to the people, present them with the ideas, present them with the project. It's up to them to carry them out. The voters.
Thank you.
Responsibility.
Oh, okay. I, I thought you were done.
Trying to grow for the word, for correct word, I guess, and I don't know if I did. But it's a, it's always responsibility to go out, go to the town meeting and voice their opinion. And then that's what carries out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jim?
So I want to thank you as well for bringing this all together. I'm glad I'm able to get in front of the town residents. Again, like I said at the beginning, I want to be their voice. I want to, I want them to be heard. And I'm not going anywhere either. I think I bring fresh ideas to the town from my experience in life. And I think that I, from my leadership skills, I can make sure that we, we can have some good leadership going forward and, and make good decisions going forward as well. I appreciate the opportunity to, for running for selectman. I appreciate the residents. If you vote for me, I, I will do everything for you.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for sharing your time with, with us and with the viewers who will be looking at your, at this forum. And I hope, I wish you all the best of luck and may the best man win.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.